I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, October 18th, 2018. I'll remind everyone to please silence their phones or any other electronic devices. And if you have any blue slips, please bring those up here and to Ms. Jessica prior to the item that you wish to speak on. We'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Brain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's pray. Father God, we love you. We just thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings that you lay upon each and every one of our lives, Father. We just ask tonight that you give us the wisdom and the sermon, Father, to make the decisions that please you. And, Father, we just ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Brain, and happy birthday.
Yes, indeed.
Item number three, roll call, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pond.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Mr. Guidry.
Here.
Mr. Gillory was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott is out of town at a police jury postal conference. Mrs. Trimmie was unable to attend. Vice President Quadi.
Here.
And President Behrs.
Here, thank you. Item number four, appearance by Mr. Rene Fontenot Free, candidate for Louisiana Secretary of State.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. I know you have real important business to do, so I promise I won't talk very long. I feel like I'm at home here because I am from Lake Charles. I went to St. Margaret, St. Louis, Magnes, and then in eighty-five, went to law school in Baton Rouge at Southern. And I ended up staying there. And for the last twenty-eight years, I've worked for the state of Louisiana. Twenty-four years with the Attorney General's office and four years with the Secretary of State's office. And guess what? I have never run for office. You all have forgotten more about running for office than I know. So I can run the office, the Attorney General's office, and the Secretary of State's office, but running for office has been a whole new experience. In May, when Tom Shedler resigned, because of my years of experience in state work, I had people start calling me from all over, all over the state saying, Renee, you know how to run that office. You need to do that. And I promptly said, you have lost your mind. Because that was never been on my radar, to run for office. But as things would happen, here I am. I decided to go ahead and try to do this job for the people of this state because I've done it before. I've done it when we merged elections with the Secretary of State's office, and then Katrina and Rita happened. We lost the entire infrastructure south of I-ten from, you know, one state line to the other. So probably in the history of, of the Secretary of State's office, the hardest times that we've had, I've been there. I've run that office. I conducted the elections after Katrina in New Orleans, when we were still under the U.S. Department of Justice rule, and we had to get every single polling place pre-cleared through U.S. Justice. We got sued by every special interest group in the country. But you know what? They were doing their job. Because they were trying to make sure that the people that were eligible to vote and wanted to vote had the opportunity. And the good thing about it is, in federal court, the federal judge approved our plan. So we did the right thing by the people. And it was very gratifying work to me. And last year, I was eligible to retire. And although I still call Lake Charles my home, even though I've been in Baton Rouge for over thirty years, I considered coming back to Lake Charles. But I really felt like I was too young to quit work. And when this came about, I feel like I have something to offer. That office has been shaken because of the things that have happened in the last two years. And so I think that I have the opportunity and the ability to restore people's trust in that office. And that's what I would like to do. But I need your help. I've never run for office before. I need the people that I know that can, that trust me to support me in this endeavor. And so, you know, with the timeframe being short, it's only, what, four months? Most people have two years. Quite frankly, though, if I had two years, I don't know if I'd have signed up. Because that's a little bit too long. But, you know, I looked at the short timeframe and said, I can do a sprint. I can do that sprint. But I do need your help. It'll be people like you that are respected in the community. You need to tell your friends and your family that, that your choice would be number six, Renee Fontenot Free. And if you would do that, I'd really appreciate it. I'm not going to keep you anymore, but it's number six on the sixth, and the vote is free. It won't cost you a dime. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have some comments.
Mr.? Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Renee, it's been a pleasure. And for a lot of those that are here tonight, you and I have worked together for a number of years, setting up different organizations throughout the state and everything. And I just want to say how much I appreciate your professionalism and your expertise in getting things done. And I just want to say to you, best of luck. And you are a genuine person, and I think it's people like you that sometimes make us want to do things in life to better ourselves. And I just can't thank you enough for how you've helped me through the years. So again, thank you so much, and, you know, the best of all of your endeavors, Ms. Free.
I appreciate that. I really do. Kevin, it's, it's work that I've been able to do with people like you that have shown me that we have to put people above politics. Because in this, in the current atmosphere, with the partisan politics that are at state and local levels, if we don't come together as a people and put all of that party stuff aside, we're not going to go anywhere. Anywhere. I've served five attorneys general and three secretaries of state. None of them asked my party affiliation before they hired me, and all were pleased with the work that I did. So my pledge to you is that I will make decisions based on the best interests of the people of this state, not in my best interest or any political party. And for anyone that wants to know, when I was eighteen, daddy brought me down to the registrar's office right here in Lake Charles and said, okay, Renee, this is what we're doing. He said, you're going to register as a Democrat. And I said, yes, sir. And so I've remained that all these years, and my party affiliation has never been an issue in the work that I've done. So I never felt like I needed to change it. But at this stage of the game, we've got to come together and make decisions that are in the best interest of the people, not, not me, because I'm not really a politician. I'm a public servant for twenty-eight years. And so I've done things for the people. And by the way, I'm trying to lead by example. I took a leave of absence in May. I haven't gotten a paycheck in May, since May. So it's like, this election better get here soon, because those beanie weenies are getting bad, you know? Anyway, I appreciate y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Free.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Item number five, Ms. Mimi Methvin, candidate for U.S. Congress, third congressional district, was scheduled to appear, but she did call. She had something come up, and she is unable to attend. Item number six, appearance by Mr. Vic Salvador, candidate for Ward Three, Lake Charles City Marshal.
Good evening, and I agree with Ms. Free. As a Republican, we have to all work together, and, and hopefully that will be done. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I will also, as a new candidate, first-time candidate, I want to say thank you to you guys for the work that you do. It's a difficult job getting to, to that seat, and it's a difficult job making the decision that you have to make, and I appreciate that. I am not a native of Lake Charles, and that's not my fault. My father was a veteran. He was a career Air Force officer, and married my mother when he was stationed here at Chenalt, when he decided that we'd moved enough. I was about to go to my fourth elementary school. My, my father resigned his commission, retired, and, and we moved to Lake Charles, where I've lived ever since. I'm a graduate of Magnes State University. I'm a supporter of Magnes State University, and I think that's an important thing to do for our community, because that's an important part of our community. It brings industry that, that we need. I am a public servant. I'm a Kowanian. I've been a Kowanian for many, many years, and I believe in giving back to our community in, in that way. I want to, I don't, one of my opponents is in the back, and throughout this entire race, all of us have been civil to each other, and, and I'm grateful for that. And I'll thank him tonight, just like I've thanked him many other times, as well as the other candidates. And hopefully, in these last couple of weeks, it'll remain that way. I want to compare myself to, to these candidates. And I'm not calling out names, but only a few of us are post-certified police officers. We're all qualified to, to run for this office, but only a few of us are, are actual full-time, are happy and full-time police officers. Even few of us have supervised police officers. I am the only one that has graduated from the FBI National Academy. That's a, that is an eleven-week program that focuses on leadership, ethics, and management. I am an FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Command College graduate. I was the chief civil deputy for Sheriff Tony Manquuso in the last years of my career with the sheriff's office. That means that I've, I've done everything on a daily basis that the marshal does in Ward Three. I've done it for the entire parish of, of Calcasieu. I can easily step into this position. And it will be a return to the marshal's office for me, where I supervised for Tony Manquuso when he was the marshal many years ago. And if I return to the marshal's office, I will bring the same level of compassion that we have instilled in our deputies at the sheriff's office. I'll bring that same level of compassion to the, to the marshal's office and serve our community in the same way. And we'll insist on that. The, the thing that strikes me the most in this election is the salary of the marshal. This year, it's approaching $300,000, which is almost twice as much as the sheriff makes, who runs a probably seventy-five million dollar budget, eight-hundred-and-fifty employees, twelve-hundred inmates. It is a, it is quite an office that he has, and he makes half of what the city marshal can make. And those, those, that income is going to increase in the next year and continue to increase. I am not the only candidate that says I want to lower the salary. I am the only candidate that has stated from the beginning that I want the law changed to permanently limit the marshal's salary. I want the legislature to decide what that salary is and, and continue to, to adjust it as necessary throughout the years. I don't, I don't think that the marshal should set his salary. That is up to the people. I pledge that I will work towards that if I'm elected, and I will serve honorably for Ward Three. The election is November sixth, Tuesday, and early voting begins next week. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Salvador. Item number seven, appearance by Mr. Nathan Keller, candidate for Ward Three, Lake Charles City Marshal. Good evening, Mr. Keller.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Keller. I am a retired Lake Charles police officer. I retired with thirty years. I retired as commander of operations. I retired to run for Ward Three City Marshal. My duties as commander of operations with the Lake Charles Police Department consisted of, I was direct commander over patrol, K-9, the, the jail, and also the community policing division. Community policing is dear and true to my heart. So when I decided to run for this race, in this particular race, I looked at all the variables, and what makes me unique from all the other candidates is I've been in the community. I've been a part of community events. I've been a part of when the community was upset with us, trying to figure out solutions to certain issues. I've been there. I've been at the table. I haven't shied away. But I also understand that our law enforcement officers need to be connected to the community we serve. We are servants to the community. And until we, the leader, understands that we are servants first, we're going to always be stagnant. And I say that, and someone misquoted me when I said the marshal's office has been dormant for several years. I said, that's not what I said. I said, the marshal's office has been dormant when it comes to community service, having deputies, deputy marshals in the community, being part of watch meetings, being part of community meetings. That way, we understand that quality of life issues are seventy percent of the cause that officers go on. Not necessarily criminal, quality of life. Someone's dog is barking at night, or how do we get someone evicted from a home, or those type of deals. So we need to understand that if we don't connect, how can we go in the community and talk to anybody? We can't wait until a problem occurs to gain and build relationships in our community. As commander of operations, I was a strong advocate of that. I made sure that my officers went to community meetings, watch meetings, concerned citizens' meetings, but not only that, I made sure they were trained in those areas. I believe in crisis intervention training. I strongly believe in it. Under my command, I had over a third of my senior officers go through that training. What that training does is, it teaches officers how to go and handle and deal with mental illness. We understand that mental illness is a serious issue, and it has to be dealt with. And if you're not properly trained, you'll do something that you shouldn't really be doing, and you're escalating instead of de-escalating. And what it teaches is, it tells us how to de-escalate a situation. Now, that's different training from most officers, because usually, we go in and we are aggressive, we want to make sure we take control. But sometime, we have to back up because of these illnesses and understand. Because what happens is, that particular person ends up, we locking them up, and they're going to jail versus going to a mental hospital or to the hospital where they can get help. I understand that the opioid issue is a major crisis, but we also have a major issue with synthetic drugs, synthetic marijuana. That is a major issue in the community that no one's talking about. We have to address that. We have to go into the schools as law enforcement officers and teach, and tell them about what these drugs are doing, and show them, and, and, and just be real. Connect back with the school, the school board, and I've done that in the past, and I will continue to do it. I think we need to be with the churches as well. The churches play an integral role in what goes on in the community. We need, the law enforcement need to connect. I stand on a platform, and it's just, it's simple, committed through community service. I've done it. I've done it for the last thirty years. Like I said, I've worked with several of the Juors in, in the community, whether it was moving under the stars or, or cleaning the park, I've been there. I've been to Katrina. When Katrina hit, I was one of the first ones to go to Katrina and assist, not knowing that we were going to turn around and come right back for Rita. When Harvey just hit to just bring it all home, when Harvey hit, I got a team together, a team of officers. We went into the Greenwich Terrace area, and what did we do? We cleaned, and we gutted out some of those homes for those elderly people that didn't have insurance. Those are the type of things that law enforcement need to be doing. As your next Ward Three marshal, we will be visible, we'll be a part of the community, and you will think of us as the community because we live in the community. My name is Nathan Keller. I'm number fifty-one on your ballot. Please exercise your right and go out and vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, item number eight, presentations of awards from the 2019 Road and Drainage Trust Fund Program. Okay, so first off, is it City of DeQuincy? Fifty-five thousand dollars, Yocum Avenue Drainage Improvement.
Do we need to move for it?
Do we have someone here from DeQuincy?
Yeah. Kenny, Kenny, come on up. I think I'm good.
Big fat check, you need help, bro?
That looks good on three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
How long have they been working on that? That may be what we're doing. Bring the debris. Bring the debris? Where is debris at? Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, it's coming.
Thanks, it's coming.
Now, you're next. You're next.
Okay, everybody on three. One, two, three, and one more. On three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
How you doing? Good to see you. Good to see you.
I'm just a test shot. Okay, I was just a test shot. Okay, on three. One, two, three. Okay, we're gonna take one more. One, two, and three. Rapid Drainage District, number eight, Ward One. Love you, boy.
Always. You already know. That's a big one right there.
You got it. I guess I gotta move.
No.
Yeah, that's you, Kenny.
Is everybody ready?
Yeah. Just somebody said we evened it out. Okay. All right, y'all. On three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Let me get one more, I'm sorry. Okay. One, three. One, two, three. All right, thanks.
How you, buddy? Good to see you.
Yeah, I'm good, brother. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
I'm safe for some time.
Huh?
Yeah, I'm going.
I don't miss one. I don't, I don't, I don't even miss one.
Sorry, guys.
Yeah, well, I'm retired.
Very nice to meet you.
Man, how you, how you doing, man? Good to see you, baby.
You bet.
Good to see you.
One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
She's doing good.
Don't even say that as a joke, please.
And town a bit.
It's a pretty big check there.
Okay, y'all. On three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thanks.
Can't fish that in the A.T. pool?
Good to see you, Kenny.
Hey, Kenny. They won't let us give you a sack of candy.
Love you, Kenny.
I'm glad you got to see me, brother.
How's it going?
How's it going?
Stone's up, man.
Hmm?
Stone's up.
At least it's up.
Yeah.
It hurt a lot.
Anyway, I got it.
Item number nine, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advice regarding monthly budget to actual comparison. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pond, and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item ten, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane. Mr. President, we have thirty-eight applications before you tonight and recommend they be approved. So move. Second. Thirty-eight. We have a motion to approve, excuse me, and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item eleven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September twenty, two thousand and eighteen. I got a motion by Mr. White, second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of approving the parish-wide drainage committee report dated October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Andrew Pond. Thank you, Mr. President. The parish-wide drainage committee met on Thursday, October eleventh, at five-thirty P.M. and received a report from staff, which included a brief review of the framework established in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, drainage mission, guiding principles, policy objectives, and operational maintenance objectives, and corresponding information related to the original framework. The findings and recommendations from the Stormwater Management in Calcasieu Parish Two Point Zero, a study of parish-wide drainage maintenance commissioned by the police jury, was presented and discussed. Staff presented an overview of the study and recommendations and proposed a timeline for key activities. The timeline continues with a series of meetings with drainage districts and stakeholders to further review the study, as well as time for public review and input. Staff recommended formal action by the committee in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. Following discussion, the committee recommended an additional intermediate drainage committee meeting for public comment to be held prior to the meeting to consider a formal recommendation by the committee. This time, I'll entertain a motion to receive a report from staff. Motion to receive. I got a motion to receive report by Mr. Abshire, and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull item twenty. We will. Have we got a motion to pull item twenty and move it up? You don't need a motion to do that. Yeah. All righty. Okay, I am going to move twenty up. How about that? Item number twenty, consideration of adopting a resolution approving issuance, sale, and delivery, by the Memorial Hospital Service District, Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana, of not exceeding one hundred and ten million dollars, hospital revenue and refunding bonds, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen. Move on twenty. Got a motion? Second. Four, and a second by, by Mr. White, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item eleven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September twenty, two thousand and eighteen. I got a motion by Mr. White, second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of approving the parish-wide drainage committee report dated October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Andrew Pond. Thank you, Mr. President. The parish-wide drainage committee met on Thursday, October eleventh, at five-thirty P.M. and received a report from staff, which included a brief review of the framework established in the spring of two thousand and fifteen, drainage mission, guiding principles, policy objectives, and operational maintenance objectives, and corresponding information related to the original framework. The findings and recommendations from the Stormwater Management in Calcasieu Parish Two Point Zero, a study of parish-wide drainage maintenance commissioned by the police jury, was presented and discussed. Staff presented an overview of the study and recommendations and proposed a timeline for key activities. The timeline continues with a series of meetings with drainage districts and stakeholders to further review the study, as well as time for public review and input. Staff recommended formal action by the committee in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. Following discussion, the committee recommended an additional intermediate drainage committee meeting for public comment to be held prior to the meeting to consider a formal recommendation by the committee. This time, I'll entertain a motion to receive a report from staff. Motion to receive. I got a motion to receive report by Mr. Abshire, and a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull item twenty. We will. Have we got a motion to pull item twenty and move it up? You don't need a motion to do that. Yeah. All righty. Okay, I am going to move twenty up. How about that? Item number twenty, consideration of adopting a resolution approving issuance, sale, and delivery, by the Memorial Hospital Service District, Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana, of not exceeding one hundred and ten million dollars, hospital revenue and refunding bonds, Series Two Thousand and Nineteen. Move on twenty. Got a motion? Second. Four, and a second by, by Mr. White, and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Thank you. We'll go back to thirteen without a motion. Just go back. Go back. Whatever you want to do.
Whatever you want to do.
Item thirteen, take appropriate action on a request by Dorothy Hannah Edel to rezone from agricultural to single-family residential. Second. To allow single-family residential development, four hundred and ninety-three lots in Pine Shadows Estates at seven fifty Goodman Road in Ward Three. We've got a motion by Mr. Collins to defer for thirty days, and we have a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Are we needing to call on the applicants?
Not if it's deferred.
Okay, so.
You can call on me.
Mr. Landry.
Did we already defer this once?
Yeah.
Is this the second? Thirty-day? Okay. I mean, I hope it gets done in the next thirty days. I wouldn't want to be the guy ready to break ground and build those houses, but I had to wait sixty more days.
Mr. Landry, it will get to that in the next thirty days.
In the next month, it's going to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. We've got a motion and a second to defer for thirty days. Any further discussions? Mr. Gabb?
Are we good?
Okay. Any objection? That item carries. Fourteen, take appropriate action on a request by Brent Sonnier Educks to rezone from agricultural to light industrial to allow industrial development, boat repair, and welding shop at seventy-seven ninety-three Highway twenty-seven in Ward Two. Got a motion. Uh, excuse me, the, the Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that this request be granted with conditions. So, we have a, a motion to uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Latour, a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fifteen, take appropriate action on a request by Property Wise LLC to rezone from mixed residential to multifamily residential to allow multifamily residential development, six duplexes at thirteen sixty-eight, thirteen seventy, and thirteen eighty-six Georgia Road in Ward One. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I have a motion to uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fifteen, take appropriate action on a request by K.W.G. Properties LLC to rezone from light industrial, general commercial, and mixed residential to light industrial to update a non-conforming use and allow expansion of the light industrial development machine shop at five hundred Legere Road and fifty-four oh eight Conne Street in Ward Three.
Move to accept with stipulation.
Second. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. Got a motion to uphold planning and zoning by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Seventeen, take appropriate action on a request by Calcasieu Parish Division of Planning and Development to rezone certain tracts of land from agricultural, mixed residential, multifamily residential, light industrial, and manufactured home park to single-family residential to maintain the residential character of the area generally off Smith Ferry Road, Sanford Road, Baker Road, Lofton Road, Whittington Road, Whittle Road, Riddle Road, and American Legion Road, and the Highland Forest subdivision in Ward Four. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the majority of properties be reclassified to single-family residential R-one to maintain the residential character of the area and the existing light industrial properties, and a portion of the agricultural A-one properties remain as is. So, I've got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Andrew Pond. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Eighteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a coastal use permit application for Deval towing to install six mooring dolphins south of Dockboard Road along the intracoastal waterway located within the coastal zone boundary. Got a motion by Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Nineteen, consideration of adopting the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show cause at a public hearing on December sixth, two thousand and eighteen, as to why the structures on the properties, as stipulated, should not be condemned. A, twenty-four twelve Drum Drive, South Lake Charles area. B, five oh eight Fontano Road, South Lake Charles area. C, five ten Fontano Road, South Lake Charles area. D, fifty-six nineteen Eastern Drive, Southeast Lake Charles area. E, ten fifty-one Wedgewood Drive, Moss Bluff area. Got a motion, uh, on all bullets. By Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Skipping twenty. Twenty-one, consideration of adopting a revised resolution approving the business plan for Waterworks District Number Five of Wards Three and Eight, as previously approved by the police jury on June seventh, two thousand and eighteen, for the water system improvement project. I've got a motion by Mr. White, a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twenty-two, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the resubmital of an application to the State of Louisiana Office of Facility Planning and Control for fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, capital outlet request for the gravity sewer trunk, mains, and pumping stations for South Ward Three and South Ward Four project.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twenty-three, consideration of adopting and ordnance establishing no parking from the intersection of, intersection width Old Spanish Trail to seven hundred feet south on Moss Road in Ward Four. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Farnham. Mr. Farnham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim, we had talked about this item, and we talked about the, the side of the road, the right-of-way, all the way out to, to where the damage to the culverts are happening. Did we clarify that as, as far as the fact that they can't park in the grass, they can't park on the road, but can't park in the right-of-way either, because of all the damage that's going on to the culverts?
My understanding that they would not be able to park on the right-of-way.
So, no matter how far they park off the road, unless they get onto their actual property, they'll, they'll be ticketed for parking.
No parking.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Farnham. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Twenty-four, consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. Got a motion, oh, excuse me, a motion by Mr. Andrew Pond and a second by Mr. White. I'll read these in. A, approve the submittal of a funding application for the Federal Transit Administration. B, approve the, the submittal of a funding application to the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. And C, acknowledgement of submittal of minutes from the Calcasieu Parish Human Services Advisory Board for a meeting held on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. Do we have any discussion? Any objection? That item carries. Twenty-five is an advised item that adjudicated property will be offered for sale by the Director of the Division of Planning and Development on Tuesday, October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. Item twenty-six, consideration of going into executive session to discuss NGR Properties LLC via Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. Got a motion? And a second. Mr. Landry and Mr. White.